Good morning, everyone. We'll call the October seventeenth, two thousand and twelve call meeting of the Jackson City Council of Order. And I'll leave us in the invocation and pledge. If you would, please rise. Father, we come before you this morning just thanking you for this beautiful day that you've given us. Father, I thank you for this council that you have placed in their position. Your word says that they are ordained to serve in this capacity, Father, and that is indeed a high calling. I pray for strength and wisdom and discernment as we take care of the business which affects the people of this city. Father, give us the wisdom to just build our hopes on things eternal and to hold to your unchanging hand. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see, how do we get it? One, two, three. Anita, you can show that we have a quorum on the council and the three that are at this morning. I appreciate the council coming in for a call meeting. We'll go first, invitations, public comments. Anyone in the audience who'd like to address the council under this one item of business, please let it be known when we are discussing it. The new business, consideration of contract and funding for Signal and lane improvements for Highland Avenue in conjunction with Jackson Walk Development. And I guess probably Scott, Keith, Barry, why don't y'all come up and explain the project? Then we do have some representatives here from West Tennessee Healthcare, and we'll ask them to come up and join us a little bit later. Guys, we'll turn it over to y'all.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor and council.
Good morning.
Good morning. We appreciate the opportunity to be able to have you come here this morning, a special call meeting, to discuss a project that we feel is an important project to bring before you. The project that you have here has been in the works for a couple of months. It's a project that we feel will not only help access the new Jackson Walk Development, but we feel that it'll help tie downtown together across Highland. And also, there are components of this long-range concept plan here that we feel will help create a new gateway into the downtown area. I'll let Scott tell you about the bid for the phases, the first phase of this project, and we can go through the components and answer any questions that you might have this morning.
Before you this morning is the main contract for the first phase of these improvements we're going to discuss, which includes primarily two new signals on Highland Avenue and an improvement at Lafayette Street, a turn lane at Lafayette Street. We can go through those one by one. There's a blow-up there of just the improvements of adding a little bit of widening on the west side of Lafayette Street to allow for a left turn to be put in. Moving on down, we'll put in the two new signals, one at the Jackson Walk entrance and then also College Street. Part of signalizing College Street, we've looked at the traffic and feel that it's best to block off College to the west, let it operate like a T-intersection from this point on, which will allow for pedestrians to utilize that connection in the future, but pedestrians only and block it off to vehicular traffic. And then back to the Jackson Walk entrance, provide three main crosswalks there for pedestrians as well to cross back and forth from the Jackson Walk Development to, you know, the parking there at the Tenergy Building, next to the Tenergy Building, which is our main parking area right there. The contract is before you this morning is to get these three main improvements completed. We opened bids, and Ford Construction Company was the low bid at four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty-nine cents. That was the lowest bid of two bids, and that's what's before you, the contract before you this morning. Now, Keith, do you want to go over the additional phases? I'll let Keith talk about.
In your packet, hopefully you had a description of the project that had three phases included on it, and this first phase is what Scott's just outlined for you, which is the immediate need for the traffic control, these signals and left turn lanes and improvements to Highland and Lafayette that need to access the Jackson Walk Development. Those are listed in your package as Phase One, but there is future phases that, right now, we just really like, I guess more or less, to depict to you, to show you what we're working on, get your buy-in to allow us to move forward in researching it and pursuing it, since it's not part of the contract this morning. The first thing, I guess, second phase is shown in the packet as a roundabout, proposed roundabout at Highland and Dedrick. You see a depiction here. We've got a couple of different shots. We've got this plans drawing, and we do have the roundabout overlaid on top of an aerial, so you could see the existing businesses and things at that intersection. Barry Alexander with Neil Schaefer is here this morning. He can probably help explain a lot of this traffic circulation around the proposed roundabout a little bit better than I can, since he's a traffic engineer and I'm just a transportation planner, but he's here if you have any specific questions about that, about the roundabout. Again, we're pursuing that. Our hope is, since it is a federal route on Highland and a state route on Highland, that we might be able to pursue some funding opportunities with some federal dollars, some state dollars maybe. So, you know, as I said, this is not what we're voting on today. It's more just a depiction, and if you'll allow us to move forward with looking into this concept, and we'll bring that back to you at a later date if we move forward with it. The third phase shown in your packet is some pedestrian improvements to College Street. Scott had mentioned that part of the first phase that we're looking at today is to block off vehicular traffic going westbound onto College here at Highland with the new signal that would hopefully be put in there. So blocking that off gives us the opportunity now to upgrade this corridor up through the farmer's market. These are the farmer's market sheds that are here. This is Shannon Street, Cross Street here that goes down into the Jackson Walk Development. And so by taking the car traffic off of here and truck traffic off of here, then we'll be able to hopefully upgrade that, do some treatments to that roadway, maybe some, you know, decorative pavement or pavers or combination or whatever that may end up being throughout our design, and do an intersection detail here maybe at Shannon Street. So this is just conceptual. It's not anything locked in. It was just to kind of show an opportunity we might have to do that. And again, if you, there's no funding right now identified for this particular phase. If you let us move forward with it, we would bring this back to you at a later date as well. But I'll let Barry, if you have any questions right now on any of the second or third phases here that we've listed, or even actually the traffic control, the first phase and how the signals would operate at the entrance, we'll let Barry give you some of that detail if he needs to.
Guys, it may be well-intended for you all to kind of give an overview, and I know the people from West Tennessee Healthcare will be able to do it on why we're doing anything.
Sure, yes. Well, as I said at the start, we hope that we are encouraged with the redevelopment, obviously, of the Jackson Walk Development and when that came in, and we put a lot of effort into internal components of that and what the streets would look like and streetscapes would look like. And now that that's well underway and Hal and his group have got that construction going and the lift is coming together, now we're starting to move outside of the development, look at the access around the development, the corridors leading to the development, in other words, and then how can we now take advantage, full advantage, of this asset that we'll have here in downtown and incorporate it into the downtown proper, the rest of downtown? So that is kind of the impetus that started us looking at this particular project. And as I said, not only does it help us access the new development at the new Plaza with the traffic control, with the signals and things, it's going to hopefully help tie in the farmer's market area, this new Jackson Walk Development, give us some, hopefully some good crossings with slower traffic through this corridor now to cross Highland to consolidate downtown. I know Katie Pace is here. The Jackson Downtown Development Corporation has long sought a way to do that, and we hope that they're supportive of the efforts that we're making here today and tying downtown together. And then also to let travelers know as they're coming up and down Highland, the roundabout, that would give us a kind of a delineation that we're entering a different part of Highland. This is a different area. We're entering a downtown area. The roundabout will be a gateway feature, slower, slow the traffic down, hopefully as we go around that roundabout. And then that'll help us mark this new downtown corridor, so.
Also, too, as far as the signal justification, Barry has done some preliminary estimates in looking at what this overall development will generate as far as traffic coming in and out, and has a trip, done trip generations based on that to feel that the signals are going to be needed at full build-out. So we're kind of getting ahead of the game with the main lift center opening.
The main component, though, would be flowing of vehicular traffic and safety of pedestrians moving back and forth from the parking lot there at Tenergy and JEA across to the left area.
There's really no safe way to cross Highland Avenue as a pedestrian uncontrolled. You need a controlled movement there.
Right, and this is something we do with all new developments. You know, we've done mostly with the new developments up north around I-4A and Van Drive. We traditionally do traffic studies and have improvements put in, turn lanes and traffic lights. This is no different than any of those.
To add to what Keith was saying, this one, because it is in the downtown area, then that made the pedestrian component of it a much higher priority than it is in a lot of developments that we, the preliminary estimates we ran on this were that the Jackson Walk Development would generate somewhere around forty-four hundred cars per day. That's total entering and exiting, or forty-four hundred trips, I'm sorry. And a significant number of those probably would be pedestrians because of the availability of the parking on the east side of Highland. So we felt like getting the pedestrians, getting the cars in and out of the development and getting the pedestrians where they could cross Highland to get to the Jackson Walk Development and to the farmer's market were the two main aims. And the, an early meeting we had on this, everybody felt like to, because of the pedestrian volumes, one of the main considerations was to get traffic coming down Highland to sort of change their thinking. And the cars are coming down the hill toward Dedrick at forty miles an hour, and we started thinking about ways to make them realize that they're in a different area, in a downtown area. And that's sort of where the concept of the roundabout came about, was it will pull traffic speeds down to twenty miles an hour roughly and just make safer and just be a visual cue that you're entering a different kind of area.
Okay, we have Bobby Arnold, who's CEO of West Tennessee Healthcare, and Hal Crocker here, the developer of CityWalk, and also Dr. Lisa Piercey here, who will be really in charge of the CityWalk after it opens. Before I ask one of them to come up, guys, you all have a breakdown of the cost, the total cost of Phase One, who's going to do what, and we obviously have the bid price that we're asking the council to consider. I think I may simply add this, the council member, when we borrowed, went to the market and got our funding for capital last year, two years ago, I forget when it was, this is being, this funding will come out of that particular funding. There's no new funding created by the city. It'll simply replace some other projects that we will have to do a little bit later, but looking at the importance and the safety of people going to and fro, we feel like this project certainly is a high priority. So you all want to give us a breakdown of the total cost and who's going to do what?
As far as this first phase goes, we, the engineering department, in order to kind of get a jump on this project, was committed to ordering and preparing to order some of the signal equipment that takes a long time to come in. We run into this issue quite a bit, and to get Barry to go on and design the signal system and these improvements for this contract. So the city has funded both the major signal component items and then also the engineering for the project. The hospitals portion of Phase is the contract that's before you today will be, the city will initially spend that and then get reimbursed by the hospital for those items. One set of improvements that we've kind of skipped over, what's a component to the funding, is that in adding two signals to Highland Avenue with the current signals along the downtown corridor, we're going to be tying in fiber optic communication to all of the signals so that we can have a good flow and can tie the signals together so that they move traffic up and down Highland as most efficiently as possible. And a portion of this contract is doing that. The reason there's no particular funding for that shown as part of this contract before you today is that JEA is going to be helping with running all the fiber optic communications so that we can get that piece done as well, so.
Okay, do you have the three elements of funding? How much the city, obviously, we're approving the contract, how much we're going to pay, how much West Tennessee Healthcare, and how much JEA?
I don't have the specific, yeah, the city's was in the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. It's two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars what the city portion would be. The hospitals portion is today is four-hundred-and-fifty-eight, the contract before you. I think the value for the JEA work was in a hundred and...
Around a hundred-and-fifty-thousand.
Hundred-and-fifty-thousand.
Estimated.
Right. Of course, that's not hard numbers for JEA work because that's an estimated amount of work that we proposed if it was to be done by contractors, so they're saving toward the project in estimation of that.
About a hundred-and-fifty-thousand as far as in-kind services from JEA. So you've got three entities participating, plus I think Mr. Crocker and Mr. Turley will participate in some internal stuff that would be a part of this contract.
They are.
Had they not agreed to do it.
As part of installing the left turn lane, we're going to have to be adjusting some curb and gutter and doing some widening through there, and because Mr. Crocker's in that section with the CityWalk, sorry, Jackson Walk entrance as well, he's going to be doing some of the infrastructure improvements through there, which saves on the amount that we would have to do with a contractor.
We were able not to put that in the contract before you today because Hal was going to be doing that work, some drainage work, handicap ramps, curbing, a lot of concrete work that trickled into the development from Highland backward. And so there's a potential cost savings that Hal's doing for us.
Mr. Arnold, Dr. Piercey, anyone, if y'all would like to come up?
I have a question for Scott.
And just join us and ask if you would.
While they're on their way, I had a quick question.
Sure.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Relative to the roundabout, I've not seen very many roundabouts here in the south. I generally see them in the north, the DC area. Can you kind of walk me through your rationale for using that as a barrier on the north side? That's my first question. Secondly, I'm also concerned about the traffic coming from the south. Do you think that would just deter them from coming through downtown in general? And was that, you know, part of your thinking when you decided to use this?
Sure. As far as the roundabout, yeah, you're right. There are not widespread use yet in this part of the country. They are in the northeast part of the country, northwest, really throughout the country, but they're getting to be more popular here. There's not a lot in Tennessee. This would be the first one in Jackson. But I think pretty well anywhere they're put in, they, people are a little hesitant on the front end. They're a little bit leery of them, but after they start using them, they realize they work very, very well. They, there've been several studies done, some figures published by Federal Highway Administration, shows that a well-designed roundabout is, can reduce fatal accidents by ninety-plus percent, injury accidents by seventy-five percent, and they also decrease the delay to traffic because if there's not congestion in the area, nobody has to stop. You just slow down to a safe speed. So it forces, as it is right now with the signal at Dedrick, the traffic coming south on Highland, if they meet a red light there, then they have to stop completely. If they come down and it's a green, they can continue on, and just our, just observations, you know, we'd say the traffic's probably running forty miles an hour better when it comes to that intersection. Roundabout pulls them down to about twenty to twenty-five miles an hour, which is much more compatible with pedestrian movements. And just aesthetically, a roundabout gives, like Keith referred to it as a gateway, it tells you that you're in a different area. So that was some of the thinking behind the roundabout.
And there'll be no traffic light there.
No traffic light.
It'll be removed.
And it will keep two north and two southbound lanes on Highland. We're not restricting the laneage through the roundabout, so hopefully it won't discourage traffic to continue to use Highland, definitely.
And because it's a state route now, we will have to accommodate, you know, the larger vehicles, so you're not going to be, you know, restricting it downward. Trucks can't go through there. It'll be a large enough roundabout to accommodate all the traffic.
I'm a bit concerned about, you know, will our citizens be able to navigate this, you know? When it rains or a little ice on the ground, I get a little nervous. But I think it's a wonderful idea. They're beautiful if they're done correctly. I'd be interested in seeing that study that you referred, if you could get that to me.
Sure. Be glad to. Yeah, they're not the solution for every location. They're in, they have to be in the right place. I just, we felt like this, because this area has good sightlines, good visibility from every approach and good traffic volumes, it would be a good fit.
As far as roundabouts go, this is a fairly simple one, from what I can determine after talking to, you know, if you're going north on Highland, then you stay in the same lane and stay right on Highland as you go through. I guess the only complication, not really complication, we'd have to get some thought to if you're coming off of West Dedrick onto the roundabout, obviously you're going to have to go right and go around rather than hanging a left because that could be, that could not be good.
It looks more complicated when you're looking at it on paper. It's pretty intuitive when you drive one, for those of you that have been through them.
I have two questions, and Scott, you kind of addressed one about the roundabout, the size of the larger vehicles that come through. What are the plans to accommodate those larger vehicles? And I know we're far off from the idea of a roundabout, but can you address that?
Well, certainly, and Barry can probably speak to this, too. As far as what I've seen, as far as roundabouts go, you've got your, it's just the size will be...
I got distant research, too, and the sizes of roundabouts to accommodate eighteen-wheelers are pretty substantial.
Yeah, and a lot of times what they'll have is like an inner ring that's raised so that a tractor-trailer, if one got in a situation, there, you can speak to that, Barry, if you want to.
Yeah, it, no doubt, this being a state and federal route, it would have to be designed to accommodate the mix of traffic that you expect down through there. There's not a lot of tractor-trailer traffic on Highland, but there is some, so we definitely want it to be them to be able to navigate it. Like Scott said, what's depicted on the drawing that you're looking at as the red circle, now this is all just conceptual, this is very generic dimensions, but the red circle would be like a slightly raised ring of a different color pavement that is not intended that cars or smaller vehicles would drive across it, but it would assist tractor-trailers or bigger vehicles. They can track their back wheels across that safely, but, and not have to have the, cuts down a little bit on the overall size, so it would be intended to accommodate.
Do you have a satellite depiction of what the roundabouts propose to look like?
Yeah, you had that.
Just to be concerned on the size of it. And also, you said that the city could be responsible for, you think, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars? Is there an amount that we're not going to exceed, or could we get into this and the city's responsible for three-hundred thousand? Are we going to vote on a hard number? Are we going to vote on a...
We're fairly comfortable, as far as the equipment we've ordered, and we've got a contract with Barry not to exceed value at this point, that we're going to be within the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand range, and that's what we've allocated.
What's the value that we're not to exceed?
It'd be the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand right now.
Right, and what you're voting on today is just this first phase. It's not anything, the roundabout will have to come back to you, as well as those pedestrian second wheelers.
I just figured we had, okay, we can ask the questions about it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's right. The two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand is just dealing with the first phase that we've got today.
Right, and I know we've mentioned it a couple of times, the, with the roundabout, just to put a cap on that maybe, because it is a federal-state route, it will be reviewed by not only our region TDOT office, but the national TDOT design office and Federal Highway as well. So whatever radiuses and designs that we will have won't be just our local design, it'll be a design that meets their standards, and their staff will actually review those plans and approve those plans before we construct it.
Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
In regards to, back to Phase One, the proximity of the traffic signals that are going to be installed at North Liberty and north of North Liberty, what's the distance between those signals? It doesn't appear in our drawing to be very far.
They're...
You're referring to the...
The distance between those two.
Between College and North Liberty or between, or you're looking at just the North Liberty intersection?
I'm looking at North Liberty and just north of North Liberty.
That's actually just one big signal.
Okay.
It's because of the layout of the Jackson Walk Development, because they had their entrance and exit lanes are separated by a wide median, that there, it was a little bit of an unusual signal layout, but it will just be one traffic signal that, it'll just be a big, widespread-out intersection.
So what we're looking at is, just, this would be the entrance of the Jackson Walk, this is the exit, is that what we're looking at?
That's correct, yes.
And then, when you just look at the lights, it's this little...
Yeah, it's, that sketch was very conceptual there. That's not exactly the way the layout ended up being, but it was, to accommodate pedestrian traffic, it was necessary to have three crossing points, and that's what makes it a little unusual.
The biggest thing to that is that there won't be any cars trapped in what you perceive as the center of that intersection. It will operate as one, they'll be stopped on either end, and as movements enter in, that will all clear out before they'll...
Mr. Arnold, you want to, you want to come up, or you, Dr. Piercey, either one of you, and just kind of give us your assessment of...
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
On behalf of West Tennessee Healthcare and our board, first, I want to thank the city and the county as our owners for the support that our organization receives. I also appreciate the call meeting this morning, the expeditious way that this project is being handled so that hopefully we can, when we open the lift center, that this work can kind of coincide with the opening, hopefully. We also appreciate the partnership between, in this case, the city and JEA and Healthy Communities, Mr. Crocker and Mr. Turley and the hospital. Just to go back just a little bit and to refresh everyone's memory, the Lift Center, and LIFT is an acronym for Living in a Fit Tennessee, and it's a medical-based, comprehensive wellness facility. And what's important about that is to kind of remember where this all started and what we're trying to accomplish, and that's to improve the health and wellness of the entire community. And we believe that that has a real economic and a real quality of life benefit in doing so. We're very excited about that. Thinking back and looking back on our decision about, well, let me say another thing, conceptually, our board and our organization believes very strongly that while we have traditionally been viewed to provide healthcare services when needed, and we certainly want to continue to do that, we do that for everybody who shows up at our door, we do that to the very best of our ability. But we believe moving forward that part of our mission is to improve the health of the community. And so that's some of the thinking behind this project. And when we reflected on where to locate or construct this facility, we gave a lot of thought to that, and the downtown location surfaced as a clear and location for us for many reasons. It's centrally located, you know, there's only ever been one downtown in Jackson, Tennessee, and there will only ever be one downtown, and we think that's important. And downtown is actually, in terms of where people work, it's very centrally located. If you look at the numbers of people and where they work and where the manufacturers are and that type of thing, proximity to our campus... manufacturers are and that type of thing, proximity to our campus. And so we're, we're excited about that. We feel like that based on our original projections and that this project has come together, we still feel very strongly about the interest and the impact that we're going to make, both in terms of health, but also in terms of traffic and people being downtown, which leads to the, the, the thinking about why. And I think it's already been covered very well by those that have spoke this morning. But as this project has come together and we're targeting to open our doors in January, it became really obvious that, that access and safety to, you know, our, our visitors at the center and our employees was really important. And when we decided to come downtown, we realized that, you know, with Highland coming right through downtown, you're going to be on one side or the other, right? So it's really important to be able to link this facility to the rest of downtown. It's been discussed very, very clearly this morning. So I really appreciate our board stepping up. And as been described, our board has provided the council a letter of commitment for our portion of the funding. And our board will be actually meeting at the end of this month at its regularly scheduled public meeting to, to, to confirm that. So we're, we're real excited to be part of it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Arnold, any, any other questions from, from council?
Question on the, on the access. We're all assuming that all the access to the, to Lift Center in this area would come off of Highland. If you're coming from the bypass down into Jackson, will you still get on North Highland to get there? Or is there another access that would be quicker and easier?
There are other accesses. Councilman, you're right. If you're coming from the bypass, you know, if you happen to, you could access it down Shannon Street. You can access it from Lambeth down Morgan Street coming into the back of the, of the development there. So Orleans is still going to be connected, I believe, on the north side. So there, there are multiple access points in and out. Obviously, the plaza's the main advertised entrance as far as that goes. And that's why it gets the, the heavier treatment. But the left turn lane that we're proposing for Lafayette, that's part of the reason that we're proposing that as, as part of these improvements and not just focusing solely on the, the new Jackson Walk Plaza entrances because of that, that circulation around those side streets that potentially could see an increase in traffic. And so that, that's, that's exactly why we, we have that proposed in there.
I guess my question is, is we're concentrating so much on improving this area here in the process of the Lift Center being built, did we concentrate some on some of those streets? Or are those streets all going to still be pretty much the same?
We do, you know, the, other than the, the new left turn at Lafayette, like we've talked about already, the other streets will remain the way that they are with the, the traffic control that, that we already have in place. There are some, some options of things that we're looking at for the Morgan Street, Lambeth Street corridor that, that may be future things to, to bring up. It's still very preliminary. We haven't forgot those corridors. We're still, we're still researching and looking into, to options for those.
But, but I guess you're, you're saying that the majority of the traffic that's going to go to the, to Lift Center and the retail areas are all going to come off North Highland?
It will. Yes, sir.
Keith, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mayor, didn't mean to interrupt. Relative to the funding, we had three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars budgeted for the year for traffic signalization throughout the city. Am I getting that part of it right?
Is that right, Scott? I think that's referring to the...
I'm just looking at, I assume we're going to vote on this amendment?
The, of course, looking at the, looking at the current budget, we, we roll forward the finishing of a Highland and Demongram signal. That was previously budgeted within, within this budget. And so you're, you're looking at a, basically a different, I mean, that's the original budget we had in starting.
I understand that.
And then now, you know, we're asking for, for this amendment for additional funding.
But additional funding to do this project, I guess my question is, what projects are we foregoing? Or are there projects that we're not going to do?
I got you. What we've done, mentioning the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, the way you get up to, to three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand is that we rolled forward eighty thousand this year at the beginning of the fiscal year to complete Demongram and Highland traffic signals. And then the two-hundred-and-fifty was added that we've discussed this morning to fund the ordering of the signal equipment and to start the design on the, that's, you had those two together, get you, get you three-hundred.
Basically, we're foregoing some paving that we would do other places.
What projects are we foregoing in order to...
There wasn't an actual project per se that we, we had advertised that we were withdrawing funding from. It was just out of the...
Yes, we did do an internal budget amendment for the two-hundred-and-fifty that came from the paving budget into this, into this signalization budget to get us started on, on this particular project. And then the budget amendment you see is for the contract, which, as proven in that, will, will also be approving the, the reimbursement, reimbursement of that contract as well.
So I'm clear. There are no projects that we are foregoing to do this?
Right. As far as the overall paving budget, you know, we won't have as many dollars to utilize for the, the overall city paving. So particular streets, Mayor may not, you know, won't go as far.
The paving dollars won't stretch as far as they were going to stretch. So if, if you're looking at it that way, that, that is something we had to pull back on. Some streets getting repaved this, this year that would potentially have to wait till next year now. But...
That's not going to be popular, but go ahead.
Right. Hopefully, the, the most in need are still even paved.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Ms. Bell, we have a budget amendment here that we need to handle. Also, why don't we handle the budget amendment first so we'll have some money. And if council happens to approve the contract, then we'll be, we'll be doing it in order. So would you, would you just come up? Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Thank you, guys. Come up and explain the budget amendment, and then we'll take a vote on the contract.
The budget amendment that you have before you, of course, is for the amount of the contract. It is no funds whatsoever to the city. This is to book the reimbursement that will be received by West Tennessee Healthcare in the amount of four-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars and forty-nine cents will be added to the traffic signalization capital budget that you mentioned, Councilman Brooks.
I have one question on that. I've never seen a construction project that didn't have overage. If this construction project signalization ends up having an overage, will the city be responsible for that? Will West Tennessee Healthcare step up and cover that?
It might be Mr. Bobby.
Or you twist our arm so hard we don't have it overage.
What our board has committed to do is a not-to-exceed amount of, I think it's six-hundred-thousand dollars. You know, our hopes are that everything will come in within budget.
And since JEA's not here, we'll put it on them. Since they can't defend themselves.
And we discussed, me and Karen discussed initially, you know, about the six-hundred-thousand figure. And I think she said funding-wise, it'd just be better to, to go with the exact contract amount. So we, we would have to come back before you if there was an overage of any kind to amend that contract. But the hospital, like you said, has that not-to-exceed of six-hundred-thousand dollars.
We're thinking positive that it's going to come in what the contract says.
And additionally, JEA is doing some work in kind. That's what I understand.
They are between a hundred-and-fifty and two-hundred thousand. They're, they're actually performing the labor and doing some, doing some...
Right. And I understand that the community partners is also stepping to the plate doing those things.
Right. And they're, both of those are, are work that we weren't including in this, this contract amount.
Right.
You know, that was, that was work that because of their donations and in-kind contributions, we were able to pull those out of what was needed.
Which lowered this contract.
Right. Is there, is there a motion for approval of the amendment?
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion, council, please vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Is there a motion for approval of the contract?
So moved.
Motion is second. Discussion from council. Council, please vote.
Voting, Anna.
Thank you, council. There being no further business, the meeting is adjourned.